This is a big night tonight. All right, this time I would like to call the meeting to order. It is 7:01 PM. Mayor Bacon is not able to be with us tonight. I am Mayor Potem Terry Nellwitz and I'll be presiding. And our first item is the invocation and pledge, so I'd like to invite Pastor John Bernie from the Cumberland Community Church to lead us in prayer tonight.
May we stand? Gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for your goodness and your mercy this day that you allowed us to go to our various jobs and to come back home safely. We thank you for your goodness, that as we traveled that we might have been used by you to help somebody along the way. As we come to this meeting, we ask for your divine wisdom upon us, that we would come and do the things that you would have us to do, to guide Smyrna. And if we just keep on praying that you would move upon each and every one who has authority, that they might be able to be used by you. Now, Lord, bless this meeting. Let your blessings be upon it and let the things that come out be for you. Forced in the precious name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much Pastor Bernie and Cumberland Community Church. If you're looking for a church home, they are a dynamic congregation located at 3110 Sports Avenue, not far from that other sports complex. Agenda changes. We have one minor item, 7A is going to be tabled, so we will change that when we get to that item. Next for our mayoral report, the first item, 3A, is the swearing in of Tammy Sadler Jones as the interim city administrator for the city of Smyrna. And I'd like to invite our Chief Judge Phyllis Gingrich Collins up to have the honor of swearing in, Ms. Tyler Jones. And I'd also like to invite several members of Tammy's family who are here tonight, her father, Mr. Walter Sadler, and her husband Lamar, and sweet Leland. Oh, and your neighbors Tracy Jim are here tonight also. Thank you so much for being here tonight. And y'all can definitely all come up. All right, are you gonna be able, I want them to be able to get you and everybody to be able to see you and your family, so do y'all think this is a good spot for me to stand in? Yeah, maybe just a little bit over there. Everybody, everybody in a good spot? Okay, if you can raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible. And repeat after me, please. I, Tammy Sadler Jones.
I, Tammy Sadler Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Conduct myself.
Conduct myself.
As interim city administrator.
As interim city administrator.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
For the ensuing term.
For the ensuing term.
That I will faithfully enforce.
That I will faithfully enforce.
The charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Smyrna.
Of the city of Smyrna.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Do the state.
Do the state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions.
And in all my actions.
As interim city administrator.
As interim city administrator.
Act as I believe.
Act as I believe.
For the best interests.
For the best interests.
Of the city of Smyrna.
For the city of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We won't get to see you this [inaudible]. He's like, "I don't care."
Thank you so much. And thank you for serving, Tammy. We appreciate it very much. The next item is item 3B, and this is a proclamation and recognition of Respect for the Law Day. And Councilman Derek Norton is going to present that tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, Respect for Law. Whereas crime and its effect upon the lives and property of Smyrna and Cobb County citizens is of the utmost concern to the members of the Smyrna Optimists Club, and crime undermines and erodes the moral and economic strengths of our communities. And whereas the Smyrna Optimists Club has for many years recognized that public awareness and determination to maintain the faith in the preservation of law and order and the appreciation of law enforcement officers and their role in preserving social order is everyone's responsibility. And whereas the Smyrna Optimists Club and its members annually recognize and honor the men and women of the Smyrna Police Department and others in law enforcement who put their lives on the line daily to safeguard and protect the citizens of this community, to reduce the crime in the area, and to make the city of Smyrna a better and safer place to live, work, and play. And whereas the Smyrna Optimists Club and its members continue to sponsor and support programs aimed at combating crime and disrespect for the law through year-round efforts. Now therefore, I, AMAX Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, do hereby proclaim May 5, 2017, as Respect for Law Day, and ask all citizens of Smyrna and the surrounding area to join with the Smyrna Optimists in carrying the message of respect for law to everyone and by example, exercise responsible citizenship.
Thank you, and I'd like to welcome what we have here to receive the award tonight. If you'd like to introduce yourselves to everyone and talk a little about the events you have upcoming.
Okay, I'm Betty Turley. I'm chairman of Respect for Law for the Smyrna Optimists. And I have a president here, Larry Gresham. And on behalf of the Smyrna Optimists, I proudly accept this proclamation, and thank you, Mayor, and Councilman. Thank you a lot.
Betty, thank you for everything you do.
Right, and I want to ask all the people in this viewing tonight to go along with the Smyrna Optimists and show them how much we respect for what they do to make our community a safe place to live. Larry, do you have anything to say?
No, you've said it all.
Thank you. And don't forget the breakfast Friday morning at 7:00. Now, I expect most of you to be here, all of you to be here.
Thank you so much. Next on the mayoral report part of the agenda, we have item 3C, which is the Proclamation and Recognition of Municipal Clerks Week, which is May 7 through 13, 2017. And Councilwoman Andrea Bluestein is going to be presenting that tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Municipal Clerks Week, May 7 through May 13, 2017. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government and other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on function of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, now therefore, I, AMAX Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby recognize the week of May 7 through May 13, 2017, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Terry Graham, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
And I can say without hesitation that the importance of the role of the city clerk might not be something that most residents of Smyrna are aware of, but I can guarantee you, if we did not have a clerk of the caliber of Terry Graham, the citizens would definitely know that something wasn't as it should be. We are so fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mayor and Council. I just want to say that on behalf of all municipal clerks, I think that they are a very hard-working bunch of people. And I'd also like to thank Heather Corn, who is a fabulous deputy clerk, who has worked very hard to go to her classes, and she's working on her certification. She's about ready to complete it. And she works very hard, as does every municipal clerk, and it is just my pleasure to serve this city and to serve the citizens of Smyrna. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Heather and Terry. Both of you, thank you, because Smyrna would not be the kind of community it is if we did not have you with us. Next, we have department head reports, and we have three tonight. First, I would like to invite Community Relations Head Jennifer Bennett to share with us what has been going on in their department.
Great. If you were anywhere near our downtown this weekend, you know that we got the event season off with a bang, literally with the gun start, with the Jonquill City Jog. I wanted to thank our sponsors right away for this year's Jonquill Jog. Our gold sponsors were Advanced Disposal, Gas South, Primrose School of Smyrna West, Glenda Baker &amp; Associates, Marietta Daily Journal, Orange Theory Fitness. Silver is Kenny's Great Pies. He always gives our first-place award winners a full key lime pie. That's one reason to run. And then our bronze sponsors are West Drive, Charter Bank, IBM SECU Credit Union, Chick-fil-A. We had the festival this weekend, and some upcoming events are Food Truck Tuesday, starting tomorrow from 5 to 7, at Taylor Bronner Park, 3180 Atlanta Road. If you can walk or bike, please do it. It should be a great night for that. Parking is always a challenge, so if you can walk or bike, we greatly appreciate it. Now, for this year's Jonquill City Jog, we did something a little extra and pushed out notification of the course in multiple ways, social media, the website. We also had it in advance on race day event signage, the digital signage that we usually use for direction for vehicles just on race day, but we had them up a little bit earlier this year, alerting people that there would be delays or changes. Police officers used a little more discretion on their own to free up the intersection of Atlanta Road and Concord when they were able to, so we didn't lock up traffic quite as much. You may have had maybe up to 10-minute delays in the past, but they were much shorter this time. We also posted it on the city website. We got a little bit of press coverage in the Marietta Daily Journal with the festival, just so you know. We may have had a little parking issue downtown. Our festival attendance is a, we approximated at 25,000 this time, and that's even with temperatures at 11 degrees above average. So everyone had a great time. Want to update you on our advertising campaign. At the last quarterly report, I let you know about the first three months of our new online campaign, where we reached 1,694,461 impressions. That wasn't the end of that cycle. That cycle was through December. The total for that first cycle was 2,236,191 impressions. Through this, the remainder of this fiscal year is going to be much higher. As of December, well, actually, through April 10, we reached 1,475,273, and that's just December 21 through April 10. So the combined total for this fiscal year for that campaign is 3,711,464 impressions. And that's impressions about Smyrna, getting people to click through. With the first part of the campaign was to find out more about the event season, and then we had a period where we were just doing the Quality of Life campaign, and that generated more than we expected in click-throughs to the city website, which was more than the first, which is pretty good. If you haven't seen the news, back in March, Atlanta was recognized by RE/MAX as the hottest hot market in the metro area. We wound up on several media outlets, including the Marietta Daily Journal, who said everyone wants to live in Smyrna. Citizen Engagement, we've been working with Community Development for the Guide Smyrna process, and they were out at the Jonquill Festival this weekend. You could put your dots on the boards to let them know what you wanted, but you can also use a survey, a mobile survey, which you can find on the website at guidesmyrna.com under participate. It says Survey Monkey. Survey. And out at the Jonquill Festival, we had Keep Smyrna Beautiful, looking for input from citizens about where they want bike racks. So start looking for more opportunity to participate in that. Coming up, the Get Right Band is going to be our first concert, June 10, from 7 to 10, in the Market Village, or not in the Market Village, on the Village Green in the downtown. Parks and Recreation has information on the website about how you sign up for tables. They have an online option this year. So go to smyrnacity.com for those reservations, that is, if you know that you can't be at them in person. And finally, for our department, we have a new hire. We have a new Community Relations Assistant, and I wanted to introduce her tonight. She was here taking pictures. Come on up, Leslie. This is Leslie Alenick. She comes to us with a background in sports and media, and she started March 13th. Welcome, Leslie.
Thank you.
As always, you can find us www smyrnacity.com, on Facebook at City of Smyrna, Georgia, and on Twitter with Smyrna News. Thank you.
One quick question. Did you say that the food truck was 5 to 7 tomorrow?
I'm sorry, 5 to 9. I may have, I may have said 7. I've worked-
Seven, and I thought, well gee, I guess we cut the time down.
I've worked seven out of seven days. So I got home at 10:30 last night, so I probably said 7.
I just thought I would ask you before people go, "That can't possibly be true."
I didn't even know I said it. 5 to 9.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, and welcome, Leslie. Next, we have the libraries. I'd like to invite Mary Moore forward. And hopefully everyone enjoyed the Friends of the Library book sale. There was a whole box of Sweet Valley highs. Hopefully somebody got their hands on them.
Good evening. My name is Mary Moore. I'm the Smyrna Library Director. All right, the first thing I'd like to talk about, and I'm very pleased to announce, is the installation of three self-service units at Smyrna Library last week. There are two located at the front desk, as you can see in the picture here, and then there's an additional one upstairs, located near the adult public computers. These units are multifunctional. They allow our customers to check out and renew materials. They can pay their fees and fines. They can reserve a public computer, and they can release their printouts from any one of those three. You don't have to switch to a different machine to do any particular thing. You can go to any of the three and do all of those things. These upgrades were part of our capital improvement project for the year, so I want to thank administration and mayor and council for approving this project. And I should also thank the city's finance and IT departments for their instrumental roles in such a successful implementation. Self-checkout and then also payment by credit card, which these units allow our customers to do, are two things that my customers have been asking for for many years. So we're really pleased to be able to fulfill those requests, but we're super jazzed that we got done by before summer reading started, because the self-service units will help alleviate some of the wait times, especially during those busy summer months. And speaking of summer reading, our summer reading theme this year is Build a Better World. We'll have activities throughout the summer related to construction, design, creation, and building. Our kickoff event is Friday, May 26. We'll be next door in the community center in the Big Gym, and we'll have lots of different building activities and crafts, as well as refreshments donated by the Dairy Queen from Spring Road and the Friends of Smyrna Library. Now, like years past, we will have weekly programming for every age group, but our adult programming will have a twist this year. For several years, we've had weekly drawings for the adults, but this year, we're going to issue a design challenge to the adults every week. And there'll be two categories. You can enter as an individual adult, or you can enter as a family. So you can get the kids and the whole family can work on a project together and submit it each week. So there'll be two winners every week, an adult and a family. And challenges will be things like design a spaceship, design a time machine, things like that, to really get the creative juices flowing. And details about summer reading and all of these activities are available on our website right now. I should also note, make a note that Croy Engineering, which I think is in the room this evening, are one of our sponsors this summer, so I wanted to give a shout-out to them. Thank you very much. They're going to help us with some engineering program. And then as always, you can keep track of everything going on at the library through our newsletters and social media. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final report tonight is with the Vision Initiative, and I'd like to invite Kelsey Scott forward.
All right, for those of you who are not as familiar with the vision, our city did a community assessment. Our mayor and council was generous enough to hear from a lot of our citizens, and they always want to know what our citizens look forward to as we grow and build our city. But out of that came the Smyrna Vision Mission Statement, which is that Smyrna will achieve the highest levels of community attachment and commitment by providing academic excellence for our children, fully involving our citizens in all aspects of the community, creating leadership opportunities for all residents, establishing high expectations for our quality of life and place, and creating a strong image and identity. And out of these five bullet points have come five citizen work groups who have been working on different initiatives, which we'll go through really quickly. The Quality of Place Group, turns out Smyrna has a lot of art artists and people who are really invested in our art community. We have not one, but two art councils, the Smyrna Arts and Cultural Council and the Indie Arts Alliance. Smyrna Arts and Culture, which is commonly known as SAC, has just recently co-sponsored the second annual Smyrna School Celebrate the Arts. They hosted Art at the Fountain at the Jonquill Festival this weekend. They've already found and booked 22 artists for our Fresh Market Series, hosted a Halloween storytelling event last October with over 500 attendees, and they'll be hosting it again this year. And they installed, with the help of our Parks and Rec Department, public art. At Durham Park, there's a dragon, so if you have not seen that yet, his name is Sang Bu. And the Indie Arts Alliance is a loose group of local artists that have created an organic program called Free Art Fridays, where they leave small pieces of art around the city of Smyrna for the public to find and enjoy. They hosted a lantern parade and the lighting of that dragon we spoke of. And they'll also be hosting summer events, including a circus, which combines acrobatics and fire. So hopefully the fire department knows about that one. The Smyrna Arts and Cultural Council, this is just a few pictures of their events, the schools, the Jonquill Festival, and their storytelling event. And then the Indie Arts Alliance, the top two pictures are just examples of Free Art Fridays. You can follow them on Instagram or Facebook to find out where those things are. And then the bottom picture is the lighting of the dragon. Also in this group, one of the initiatives in progress is to find out how we can host a shuttle service between Smyrna Commercial Districts and Centrus Park Stadium. Local restaurants actually have started shuttles to and from the Battery, including Creetwood Tavern and Varner's. And the Georgia Tech Studio Study recommended a circulator, and they provided the list of benefits, the cost breakdown, and suggested routes for that. Their next initiative is to advocate for alternative transportation options that can alleviate congestion for Smyrna residents, and they've been meeting with Sierra Club to learn about advocacy. The Image and Identity Group, they've had great success using social media to reach the general public in new and exciting ways. They have the Instagram account Sites of Smyrna. They've only been in existence for several months and already have over 100 followers and 50 posts. The bottom one is just an example of one of their posts. It's the mural in Williams Park. If you have not seen it, it's really, really neat. And this is another picture. All of these pictures are submitted by citizens, and then they're reposted to this site. So it's getting citizens involved on a daily basis. Another one of their success stories that they're working on is to tell the stories of the people of Smyrna. Local artists Rob and Alex Gaines are working on this project, and they're collecting pictures and stories of Smyrna residents at festivals. A lot of these were taken at last year's Jonquill Festival, and their final product will be a gallery display that they'll donate to our local library, as well as a book that will also be donated. The Education Group, they have had great success telling the success stories of Smyrna Public Schools. The Wave of Excellence has organically formed out of a group of parents from our Smyrna Public School system, out of Cobb County Public Schools, and they have a Facebook group. That's where they live and they post daily. They have over 3,000 members who are posting stories at each of our 12 schools. They've also been working to provide material needs to those students in need. They've developed a Businesses and Schools Subcommittee, which is working with our local principals and counselors to determine the particular needs at each of our schools and find local businesses to meet those needs. We also have a School Lunches Subcommittee, which is actually piloting a project at Griffin Middle School this summer to provide lunches when this program only had snacks beforehand. Now, each day, those children will receive a hot meal. The Community and Economic Development Group, they, our city has been working on updating our comprehensive plan. So our Community Development Department has been working with Jacobs and Market Street Services to update this, which will serve as the overarching policy and implementation guide for Smyrna's future growth and development, specifically for land use and zoning. And if you have not heard of this or are not familiar with it, please visit wwwguidesmyrna.com. And lastly, the Involvement and Leadership Group is working to increase volunteer engagement. In Smyrna, they'll be hosting a volunteer fair this fall, in which citizens can see all of the different nonprofits in Smyrna, Marietta, Vinings, Ostel, et cetera, and how they can participate with those groups. And if you have any questions, my contact information is below, and I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, item five, we have land issues, zoning, and annexations. There are none tonight. Item six is privileged licenses, and we also have none tonight. So moving on to- Item six is privileged licenses, and we also have none tonight. So moving on to seven, we have formal business. And item 7A, I believe, is going to be tabled, and this is the authorization to purchase playground equipment with CDBG funds. And I will let, if we're going to table this, I don't think we need to go into too much background, but I do want to confirm before we move forward that, and I'm not sure if, Richard can answer this, but would this, if we delay, will this jeopardize the CDBG fund availability?
Two weeks.
Okay, great. That's all. That was my only question. So I will turn this over to Mr. Pennell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to postpone-table the matter for two weeks certain, so 2017-144, Authorization to Purchase Playground Equipment with CDBG Funds for Chukkamp Park from Compan via the U.S. Community State Contract for a total cost of $149,999.43. I move to table.
All right. Do we have a second? All right. Will everyone please vote? This is the motion to table item 7A for two weeks. All right. That has passed unanimously, so we will revisit this in two weeks. The next item, 7B, is adoption of a resolution supporting the Spring Road Corridor LCI master plan. And Ms. Southard-Jones.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. On December the 7th, 2015, the city's Community Development Department was authorized by the City Council to submit an application to the Atlanta Regional Commission, ARC, to fund a land use and transportation study for the Spring Road corridor. The study corridor runs from both sides of Spring Road, from Cobb Parkway, US 41, to Atlanta Road, a distance of approximately 2.4 miles. The Seismor Group consulting team was selected as the consultant, and they initiated the study process in August of 2016. And Ken Sudrith, our Community Development Director, is here to give you more background and to introduce the Seismor team.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sudrith.
Thank you. And on a personal note, congratulations, Tammy.
Thank you.
You sort of outlined everything, and we've talked about the Spring Road corridor, really, for the last, you know, 14 to 16 months. Part of that discussion was receiving the Georgia Tech study, but the next step that we developed was the LCI, Livable Communities Initiative, for the entire corridor of Spring Road. So after we went through our proposals, the Seismor Group was selected. And as already stated, we've been working with them, really, for the last seven or eight months on that. We've had a lot of public meetings, hearings on this. I've personally met with each of you regarding our findings and where we are, but I felt like it would be appropriate to have an official presentation to you from the Seismor Group. And with that, Deanna, to get us started on that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Deanna. Thank you.
Yeah. Mayor and council, thank you so much for having us. This has been a fantastic process. We've really enjoyed it. So thank you for your continued support. So you're likely aware of our team. We were selected with the Atlanta Regional Commission and the City of Smyrna, selected Seismor Group as the lead planning firm. We also had two excellent experts in transportation and market analysis on our team, including Nelson Nygaard and Noel Consulting. We are at the end of the process, as Ken mentioned. We are at the point where we are asking for your approval of the report as an amendment to the comp plan, which, as many of you know, provides you the financing to help implement transportation initiatives through the Atlanta Regional Commission. The goal of our study was to create a dynamic, vibrant, and multimodal corridor gateway for Smyrna, connecting residents and businesses to everyday services, community amenities, and entertainment. We found that it was really important to see this now with the Braves Stadium coming in and to really make this a keynote and a key entrance into Smyrna. We had an intensive community participation process. We first attended the John Col Festival and were able to speak to many residents in the community about what they wanted to see along the corridor. We then had a community meeting with over 60 participants. We had a community survey, multiple key stakeholder interviews, a design workshop, and then a second community meeting where we presented draft findings to get final input and support. The overall themes that we heard from the community are listed here. First, we heard that there was a desire to really preserve those small and local businesses. The corridor has some great businesses that really create the identity of Smyrna, and we wanted to make sure they were supported. Provide alternative transportation options, and that is also a goal of the LCI. We don't want to provide just automobile options. We want to provide the alternative options to get people out of their car. Improve the traffic flow during peak travel times. Create shopping and retail entertainment destinations, a real experience. Develop street networks. Provide amenities for cyclists and pedestrians. Create a sense of arrival into Smyrna. And then make Spring Road more attractive, really create some beauty and a sense of identity for the corridor. So taking all that information, along with the market analysis, we started looking closer at the corridor, and they understand that there's two key development nodes. You've got the Battery and the Stadium at one end, and then John Col, finishing up construction now, on the other end. We also overlaid that with an understanding of where there was interest, where the planning department has already heard of interest in parcels looking to redevelop or rezone. And we started to develop our nodes around that. So knowing that the Battery was going to provide a good market spill, as well as the interest from properties there, made the Cumberland and Spring Road intersection very important. And then, to the left, the second node being the Neighborhood Village node. And this is where Rev Coffee is, and there's several restaurants there that really create more of a smaller-town identity along the corridor with some local businesses. We then start to look at the existing infrastructure. And here in the arrows are existing and planned bridges, pedestrian bridges. So the darkest one on the upper right is the under-construction pedestrian bridge, which will also include some transit opportunities as well connecting to the Battery. The two just below that are existing pedestrian bridges, and then the small one up on the left is a planned pedestrian connectivity potential for a bridge connecting from Smyrna over to the Battery. So we saw the opportunity to really start an infrastructure connectivity through this area that could really enhance redevelopment in some of these nodes. And we titled this "The Baseline." We see it as similar to a high line that can start to connect around to key nodes, the Battery, the Galleria, and both those properties on Smyrna. The second move that we looked at was really connecting the Battery into Smyrna and to John Col Park. This connectivity takes some people, takes the influence off of Spring Road and allows for a much more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly connection. And then the last infrastructure improvement was really looking at connectivity and starting to create a much more connected grid. So our two main nodes that we looked at. So zooming in, and this is the Cumberland Boulevard node, to the north is the property that this slide focuses on, and we call it the Smyrna Plaza. So this would be the plaza that would really connect along across to the Battery. You can see the high-line-type baseline infrastructure connecting around through these sites. The focus of the Smyrna Plaza is to create likely one of the more high-density areas close to the Battery, high mix of uses, focusing on a community plaza in the center, surrounded by high-density residential, office, hotel, a big-box retail along Cobb Parkway and Spring Road, and then restaurants and local retail services. To the south of that, we see another great opportunity for high-density, mix of uses. Also, the opportunity here for potential increased transit access. So we could see a transit hub here with office, high-density residential, and local retail services. This is the Baseline Boulevard, which is that connection from the Battery to John Col Park. This is moving into a lower-density area, so we would have medium-density housing along this Greenway Bike Boulevard, community facility in the park, and an expansion of the park is shown here. The park could also help serve as regional retention. To the south, along Sports Avenue, we see a good opportunity for redevelopment as the church is looking to move out of that property. This, again, would be predominantly medium-density housing, supported by neighborhood retail and services along Spring Road, and the potential for a boutique hotel. Moving further to the west on Spring Road, this is the intersection with Spring Street, where the Fireworks Store currently is. This, being a smaller, local, neighborhood-feeling node with Rev Coffee and Mezzaluna, we saw the opportunity to really create more of an arts district, a local district, to support those local businesses and artists, really anchored by a center park. So the triangle being converted into a green space that would then have restaurants and retail and artist studios facing the park to really help that development spur. So in order to help implement these concepts, we had some recommendations for the future development map. This is the existing future development, and here are identified changes. So item one is moving from a neighborhood activity center to a mixed-use center to support that high-density, mixed-use, closer to the Battery. Two is moving from an urban residential to a mixed-use to allow for some of the retail to intersect with residential. Three, from a community activity center to mixed-use. Again, that's where the Sports Avenue development would be, so mixed-use would be important. Number four is expanding John Col Park to the east. Number five is moving from Community Activity Center to mixed-use. This is where the arts district would be located. And item six is the, across from the Linear Park, there's property along the south side of Spring Road that we could see complement the Linear Park on the north side to become a Linear Park on the south side as well. In terms of zoning, we're recommending a tiered design overlay, in which we have Tier One being the highest density and scaling down to Tier Two and Tier Three. So the highest density at Tier One at a height of 15 stories and 40 to 50 units per acre to really complement the development that's happening across the street. Tier Two, moving down to more of a medium density of 10 stories and 20 to 30 units per acre. And then the majority of the corridor, because it is so heavily single-family residential, making sure that we keep to that lower-density zoning at a max height of six stories and 10 to 12 units per acre. We also have some recommendations on setbacks, bringing things a little closer to the streets, and moving from 50 and 100 to 30 and 50 feet setbacks. Block size requirements, encouraging this to be put into the overlay so that there is great connectivity within new developments. And then, overall, we would really encourage you to look at the opportunities for design standards along Spring Road as part of the overlay. A couple items that we wanted to recommend in the mixed-use zoning update, allowing for a smaller unit size for single-family units to 500 square feet, which would allow for some more diversity of unit types, allowing for more affordability in age generation. Ideally, this would help with, you could do little carriage houses in the back or smaller courtyard-type developments. And then, again, looking at setbacks and building separations to really make sure we're encouraging that walkable and urban form. The beautification of the gateway, the main recommendations we're looking at is to play with the landscape median, really make that a design centerpiece along the corridor. Landscaping the sidewalks and trails, nice canopies so that when we're out in the summer heat, people are still willing to walk and bike around. Incorporation of public art, you can see the bottom right-hand image is a crosswalk. We thought it would, we found this in another community, but we thought it was reminiscent of the John Col's. Improved signage, gateway signage, and wayfinding signage, and then trail enhancements. And one thing we did here quite commonly was the need for lighting along the trails. One opportunity that we thought was very interesting, this came from our transportation engineer, is looking at how we can use alternative transportation opportunities other than a bus line. And so this is a system where the engineer looked at catchment areas, and those are the different colors here, who can walk to a single bus stop or a station. And the idea is to use a system, and I think this is called Bridge, and it's similar to Uber, where you open up an application on your phone, you call the driver and say, "I need to go from here to here," and instead of them coming to your house, they come to a central location, more like a bus stop. And so it allows for better access for this kind of a system to function, as well as for people to get around a little bit more easily. With that, I'll turn it to questions.
One area you were talking about along the park, is that where those seven houses are that have served their use? It's on, it's on the south side of the street, and they're sitting on like a hill right across from the other Linear Park?
Mm-hmm. Yes, exactly.
Is that, thank you for noticing that.
Yeah, of course. Well, we had a great community representing, and then, of course, city staff has been an incredible help in this process.
Thank you.
I want to say, y'all have done a great job on this, and it's innovative, and y'all have thought about things in a different way. The Georgia Tech study was also very good. I don't know about this Braves Boulevard, it looks like it goes right through my living room, so we're going to talk about where I'm going to live, what was my living room. But I think we'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge our staff, Ken Sudrith and Tom Boland and their team, because really, when the Braves announced, he said, you know, "Wow, we got a billion-dollar investment going across the street. We got to get this right." And so he went and talked to hundreds of people, businesses, from everybody. I don't know how many lunches you and I have had talking about how we can get this entry to the city right. And this study, and the Georgia Tech study, is a direct result of that. So thanks to our staff for that, and thanks for all the good work y'all did.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilkinson? And thank y'all for all your hard work and everything. Y'all have really done a great job, and I really appreciate it, too, and how you've worked with the community. It's been really nice. So, but anyway, just one of the questions, as I was looking at it, when I saw the Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, I mean, or I guess as far as the recommendation on the western side for Tier Three, is that, is there one, a border for that, or does that go all the way to John Col, that plan?
Yeah, it would go all the way down to John Col. So it would be the majority of the corridor, but it would end at Atlanta Road.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? All right. Excellent. Okay, one more. Mr. Sudrith?
I'm suggesting that you adopt this because it is a grant, and as part of that, there is an official adoption that we need to do. It will also allow us to apply for implementation money in the future. I do want to emphasize that these are guides, suggestions, sort of a base, a foundation, whatever you want to say, so that when stuff comes in to redevelop, we have something to sort of start that discussion with. I don't want the audience to think that this is an issue that the city's going to go out and start buying a whole lot of property for this. There may be an occasion or two where there's a public-private partnership, but basically, all of the stuff that is suggested would take a long period of time when those properties are ready to develop, and then we would work with them using this as a guide on that.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone from the city who has worked so hard on this, and thank you to all the citizens who have been so very engaged on this. And thank you to the Seismor Group for spearheading this. We have so much information now to move forward with. Everything changed.
Everything changed, again, when we learned about the Braves Stadium, and so now we have these studies, we have the Georgia Tech studio. We are going to be able to move forward now with such a better picture of everything that we have the potential to do here in this area, and so it's going to be a fun next few years, seeing how everything progresses. So I will turn this now over to Mr. Stoner.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I was just going to say also, this continues the tradition of Smyrna of being proactive instead of reactive, as a community that we've done over the years, here, not just in downtown Smyrna, but around the city. And so at this time, I'd like to make a motion on 7B to approve Resolution 2017-03, Adoption of a Resolution Supporting the Spring Road Corridor, LCI, master plan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Will everyone please vote? All right, it has passed unanimously, thank you. Moving on to the next item, 7C. This is submission of an application to the Atlanta Regional Commission, seeking funding through the Federal Highway Administration, the FHWA, for a Smyrna Transit Analysis and Feasibility Study. Ms. Sadler Jones.
The Atlanta Regional Commission has recently issued a call for applications for funding for studies and other non-capital projects. The application deadline is May the 17th, 2017. City staff would like to submit an application to the ARC for this purpose. The purpose of the study is to conduct a comprehensive, updated analysis of transit needs in the city of Smyrna. If the application is successful and funding is rewarded, the city will be, will be required to provide a 20% match, which in our case is $100,000. Ken, are you going to address this one, too? Thank you.
Bring Mr. Sudrith back up.
As part of the department's budget submittal, we have included the $100,000 for that in hopes that you would approve that. The, as already stated, the application is due May 17th. It will not be awarded until the fall, and so I wanted to get ahead of this so that we were on this cycle with this. This is just a feasibility study. Several of the other studies that we have done have indicated quite an interest in transit itself, and it is Smyrna doing something about it. So this is a request to do that feasibility study, to see indeed what it tells us in more detail with that, so. I, I ask and support this and ask for you to approve it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I was going to carry this tonight, but as I am presiding, this is going to be brought forward by Councilman Ron Pennell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As was described, this is an opportunity for getting in the queue for additional support and financial opportunity to grow the city's opportunities. The Georgia Department of Transportation and Greta are fully supportive of this, and I had a brief conversation with the Chair of the ARC just last week. So I appreciate the hard work that Ken, the staff, and the team have done, and Councilman Stoner and others. So I move approval of 2017-155, which is Submission of an Application to the Atlanta Regional Commission, Seeking Funding Through the Federal Highway Administration for a Smyrna Transit Analysis and Feasibility Study.
All right, we have a motion, Ms. Bluestein has seconded. Will everyone please vote?
Could I?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, are there any more questions or discussions?
Can I bring Mr. Sudrith back up? Let me ask a couple of questions of him, please. Mr. Sudrith, is this simply a, one concern of this, or one, one option of this, is to begin a Smyrna transit system? Meaning our own bus system, independent of Cobb Link and independent of MARTA? Or are we discussing connecting to those, to those entities, or? I, I don't think it, I don't, I'm not going into this with any, thank you, with any ideals, Mr. Welch, on this. I doubt that it would say do an independent one, but the feasibility, we're not, we're not trying to direct it one way or the other. It's, is there a need for additional forms of transit, whatever that would stand for? And, and the study would start to define that in a much better way than just speculation throughout the community with that. So that's what this is for, is to determine, is there indeed a need for us to have, to have some other type of transportation, whether that's an enhancement of Cobb Link, or whether that brings in other, other things or not. So when, it, it would be a consideration to expand Cobb Link or to expand our own system? And I guess that's, is that one consideration, is for Smyrna to start its own bus system? As I said, I'm not limiting it, if, if they came back and said, you know, "That's really what you need to do," I'm sure we would have that discussion. I don't anticipate that. But again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we put any, any blinders on the study. It is just, look at the entire city of Smyrna, and let's talk about transit and see where it leads. And then will we come back to you with those findings, and then we would have another discussion regarding what that says. If it was decided that we wanted to pursue one of those options, then there is the potential to apply for additional implementation money, to then go into engineering kind of issues. But we, we are way away from those kind of issues. The question is, is there a need for more transit within the city of Smyrna?
And one of the, one of the things the issue sheet addresses is, is, I think the parameters of the study will include looking at what is currently available, what is, you know, looking at Greta, at MARTA, at Cobb Link, and I think it's, it's not, the study won't happen in a vacuum.
I, I think what, what the, what the study says is, the study initiative will actively engage Cobb County, Cobb Link, GRTA, GDOT, MARTA, and ARC, and other relevant government organizations. I, I want to go on the record at this point, as, as I am not going to support this, this motion. This is a $500,000 expenditure, 100,000, 100,000 of which is, is Cobb payer, Cobb County, excuse me, city of Smyrna taxpayer money. For us to consider a transit system or additional transit within the city of Smyrna, if, if this was looking at, at Cobb Link to determine new stops and more stops that they need to make, I may have a different, different look at it, different look at it. But the, the initiative is to, to look at Cobb Link and/or additional services to town, to MARTA, and I just do not believe that it's good use of taxpayer money from the citizens of Ward Four and/or the, the city as a whole. I, I think it's a waste of money, and I don't, I don't support it.
Are there any more questions, or is there further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to speak about it for a moment as well. I'm kind of, understand from Corky's standpoint as well, and I have also spoken with a number of the, members of, from the county staff members, and have found that they're willing to work with the city on ideas within the city for the current system that we already have. The citizens, I can speak that the citizens of Ward Five have, have the system to their, very convenient to almost every citizen of Ward Five, and I feel like that there are areas that we could work with the county, and we could use the funds to work with them in terms of improving some of the bus lines. For example, I believe it's Route 25 that comes from the west of the city, Hurt Road, and on Concord Road, and then Spring Road. I think the, it's a, I think every hour right now, but the, my thoughts are, and my, as far as speaking to other people in the county, that, that there would be room for improvement with that system, especially on game days. Maybe it could be increased in the stops from, say, once an hour to three times an hour, for example. The other thing that I really feel, I was very excited about was the proposal on Spring Road that was part of the Spring Road Corridor project with the system that they were recommending, and I feel like the funds that we have here that we're talking about could be also used to implement something in that way. So, but I feel like that also understanding the expense related to a BR, something like a BRT system, and, and what the, what the county has been doing, it's like a $500 million project to put BRT in the county. And I, I feel like that to, to start going out on our own in that we're really going in a direction that is going to be a cost to the taxpayers of Smyrna, and I, and we all are citizens of the county, and I just feel like that we should be working with the county on these ideas, and so that, I will not support it. Thank you.
I just want to say, I, this is not just luck or happenstance that, that we are in this, that we find ourselves with this opportunity. This has been a concerted effort by Councilman Stoner and others to get the attention of the state DOT Commissioner and other regional transit authority officials. The number-one concern that I hear in Ward One and throughout the city is we're being choked by traffic, and I think we would be missing a huge opportunity if we didn't look at this and, and approve this opportunity, to, to at least look at the options that are out there for us.
I didn't think I wanted to speak, but I do. Derek and I are, have Wards One and Two, and we are probably in the most congested area of Smyrna at this time. When I leave my house, the only thing I can do is make a right turn on Spring Road and then make a right turn on Campbell Road, because I can't do a U-turn at Spring and Campbell anymore right now, because I'd be competing with a, where they're pouring cement. So anything that could improve the traffic situation on Spring Road would be a godsend, because right now, traffic is backed up, like on Saturday mornings, from as far as I can see, in one direction and all the way down to Village Parkway in the other direction. So this may not be the answer, but at least it would give us some more information to work with, so I am going to support it. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All right, we do have a motion and a second. All right, the motion has passed with four yays and two nays. Moving on, the next item is 7D. This is to award the roof replacement contract to the lowest available bidder, Southern Ventures, for a synthetic slate roof at the Reed House. And Ms. Sadler Jones, will you?
Yes. Core Engineering requested quotes on behalf of the city of Smyrna for the Reed House roofing replacement. Three quotes were received. It is the recommendation of the Purchasing Department and the Parks and Recreation Department that this project be awarded to the most responsive and responsible bidder, Southern Ventures LLC, with a total price not to exceed $98,459.58. Southern Ventures, although the second lowest quote is available to begin work next week, while the lowest quote came from Williamson Roofing, who is, who cannot start for another three weeks. Southern Ventures has completed other projects for the city. Our construction manager at risk cannot continue working at the Reed House until the slate roof project is completed. Pardon me, synthetic roof, pardon me, synthetic.
Mr. Garland, do you have anything you'd like to add? All right, excellent. Are there any questions or discussion about this item?
I'd, I'd just like to mention, everyone, this is, when we say a synthetic slate roof, it has the look of a slate roof. The roof that's on there now, I'm, I'm making an assumption that it was put on in 1909, 1910, and it's been there for a long time, and it, it's served its purpose for many years. But in doing some of the work that we've done inside of the house, and the shaking and rattling and rolling, we've, we've caused our own damage to the roof to some extent. But at this point, I would like a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item D 2017-167, to award the roof replacement contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Southern Ventures, to install a synthetic slate roof at the Reed House.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, I had a question. I know how delicate slate, particularly of that age, is. As the slate is removed, if there is great care to be taken in trying to preserve some of those pieces, it does have value in the marketplace, and I would like to see as best as possible, let's try to recover.
Ron, I, I spoke with him this afternoon. We, as of now, we have a full pallet wide, about four feet tall. So we have some, and I'm, I understand your concern, and I'd like to save as many as we can also, but I don't want to cause an undue burden on the contractor and him increase our costs to us. So if, if we can do it within that cost, I fully support that.
All right, if there is no further discussion, will everyone please vote? All right, the motion has passed unanimously with six yays. Next, we have Item 7E, which is the Authorization for Commercial Land Lease and Temporary Facility Agreements to Facilitate the Temporary Relocation of Fire Station Two Personnel and Apparatus During the Construction of Fire Station Two, and to Allow the Mayor to Sign and Execute All Related Documents. Ms. Sadler Jones?
The replacement of Fire Station Two is a project that was really approved in the 2016 SPOST. The RFP has been awarded to BM&amp;K Construction Company for construction of a new facility. Approval of this request will allow the Smyrna Fire Department to keep those response assets within the response area during construction, allowing established response standards to be maintained. Quality Tape &amp; Label, located at the corner of North Cooper Lake and Concord Road, has agreed to lease a portion of their property to the city of Smyrna for 10 months at a total cost of $10,000, and that will be $1,000 per month for the lease, to facilitate the placement of a job trailer-type facility that would house all Fire Station Number Two personnel during the construction timeframe. Additionally, Action Mobile, who will be providing the job trailer, has a lease amount to total $18,285. And our fire chief is here, in case anybody has any additional questions.
Thank you. And I will hand this over to Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is not an ideal situation, but it is important to maintain our service delivery times for that area. I think the original plan was to move during the construction of Fire Station Two, move personnel and equipment to Fire Station Four, and it just wouldn't have been adequate response times. In talking with the chief and talking with others, we decided this was the best option for, to serve our citizens, and so, if there's no more discussion, I will make a motion to approve Item 7E 2017-165, Authorization for Commercial Land Lease and Temporary Facility Agreements to Facilitate the Temporary Relocation of Fire Station Two Personnel and Apparatus During the Construction of Fire Station Two, and Allow the Mayor to Sign and Execute All Related Documents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, will everyone please vote? All right, the motion has passed unanimously, and the final item under formal business is 7F, which is Approval of the Ward Six Appointment to the Smyrna Tree Board, Matt Davis, for a term to expire in August of 2020. And I, that is Mr. Stoner.
Thank you. Madam Mayor Proton, very quickly, just real, real quickly, this unfortunately has been open pretty much from my first day on the council, and I've been looking for someone, and I think we definitely found an excellent candidate, gentleman by Matt Davis. Just a little bit on him, he's a graduate of Mississippi State University with a degree in forest resource management. He is a registered forester as well. He is a registered forester, as well as an ISA-certified arbiter. So he definitely knows more about trees than probably everybody up here on the city council. So I was very happy that he is willing to give up his time, because obviously this is a volunteer position. So I'd like to make a motion on 7F 2017-163, Approval Award Six Appointment to the Smyrna Tree Board, Matt Davis, for a term to expire August 2020.
All right, is there any further discussion? Will everyone please vote? All right, the motion has passed unanimously. Hail state! Next, under Commercial Building Permits, we have none. Item nine is the Consent Agenda, and Ms. Sadler-Jones, if you will please take us through that.
The consent agenda is as follows. Item A, Approval of the Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes for April 17th, 2017. B, Approval of the Mayor and Council Pre-Council Meeting Minutes for April 17th, 2017. C, Approval of the Special Called Meeting of the Mayor and Council Held on Thursday, April 20th, 2017. D, Authorization to Enter Into An Agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Title VI Non-Discrimination Agreement, and Allow the Mayor to Sign and Execute All Related Documents. And Item E, Approval to Use Council Chambers for Forest Hills Neighborhood Association Meeting Wednesday, May the 10th, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion about any of the items on the Consent Agenda tonight? All right, we can have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote. Or against, you can vote too. All right, the motion has passed unanimously, 6-0. Item 10 is Committee Reports, and I will start tonight with Mr. Norton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No committee report tonight. I just want to remind residents of Afton Downs that we'll have a neighborhood meeting Sunday, this coming Sunday, the 7th, at 5:30. We'll be doing a cookout. And for those of you who live in Argyle Estates, Farmstead, Vining Point, and Falling Waters, stay tuned, we'll be scheduling ward meetings there in the next few weeks. With that, I yield.
Ms. Bluestein.
I don't have a formal report tonight. I just want to remind everyone that the Food Truck Tuesdays is going to start tomorrow night from 5:00 to 9:00. So, see you there. Thank you.
Mr. Welch.
I have no report this evening, but I would like to thank everybody that came out the last weekend, not this past weekend, but the one before, for Keeps Smyrna Beautiful. For this time, I actually had a, I borrowed my son's blower, which has a vacuum attachment to it, and sucked up cigarette butts. It was so heavy by the time I got to the end of my cleanup, I couldn't hardly carry it anymore. So, you know, just please, use your ashtray for the citizens out there. You know, they're nasty, and it's hard to pick them up. So keep in mind that, you know, you're littering, no matter how small it is, you're still littering, and we want to keep it out of the city of Smyrna. Thank you.
I believe Keeps Smyrna Beautiful used to provide ashtrays to citizens. I don't know if they still do that, but they, if they don't still provide ashtrays, I'm sure they can point you in the right direction to where you can purchase an ashtray for your car. And I imagine it was very satisfying to hear those butts get sucked up into the vacuum. Ms. Wilkinson.
I would like to follow up on something that Corky just mentioned, which was the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful event last Saturday, and I wanted to just acknowledge and thank the group from La Luz de Mounyo, which is the Light of the World Church, and they had like 30 members that came out and cleaned two miles of South Cobb Drive, mostly in Ward Five. So I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank them for helping to clean up our area. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Stoner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Proton. Very quickly, in the sense of a report, committee report, definitely want to, glad to hear about the turnout we had concerning Guide Smyrna on a comprehensive plan at the John Paul Festival this past weekend. As a reminder to folks on that, they can definitely go to guidesmyrna.com, which is a website dedicated to that. Again, want to encourage our folks to engage. This is your opportunity to have an impact as we move forward on our comprehensive plan for the future and how the community develops. Just as a reminder, on June 8th, currently scheduled from 6:30 to 8:30 at Bronner Hall, there'll be another public open house with that, and of course, I'll be reminding folks about that as we get closer to it also. In the sense of the committee report, that's what I have on that, but I do want to make two other notes, as was made by, as Councilman Brumstein said, basically, in my neighborhood, where I live in Forest Hills, we're back to having, obviously, Food Truck Tuesdays. And I know we worked with the police department last year, and I think we've definitely had an improvement in the sense of how we're handling parking and traffic flow, and look forward to continuing that this coming year, so I want to make sure my neighbors and folks are aware of that. And then finally, as was mentioned on the consent agenda, the Forest Hills Preservation Group is going to be having a meeting here at City Hall, excuse me, Wednesday, May 10th, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. is the actual time of the meeting. And for the folks in Forest Hills, what that's about is concerning a potential development on Hayes Drive, and I encourage them to come out and meet with the developer and builder who's looking at that potential development. At that, I am finished.
All right, Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to acknowledge Mayor Max Bacon and his leadership in the community as a whole for being such a unique partner with our education awards. It's a wonderful recognition of volunteers, of staff, and of students who help make Smyrna a great place. Madam Mayor, you did a great job leading that this time, and I know Mayor Bacon is going to be sad that he missed it, especially to have his sister be handed the microphone for such an extended period of time. I think that is hereditary, that grabbing that microphone. But they did, all did a great job, and she is retiring, so we'll have an opportunity to recognize her again sometime soon. This Thursday, the Smyrna Business Association is hosting their monthly luncheon, and the guest this week, this month, is Jim Wilkis of Cobb DOT. He will outline all of the projects that touch and are related to Smyrna, and some that are bigger and broader in scope for the entirety of the city. If you'd like to attend, please go to smyrnabusiness.org and register. If you're not a member, there's an opportunity there to join, but lunch, if you're just a walk-up guest, it's $20. We'd encourage you to register ahead of time, and if you are a member, it's $12. smyrnabusiness.org, that's this Thursday at lunchtime, so we gather at 11:30 at Smyrna Community Center, just down the street. It's always a great program. And then thirdly, on committee reports, it's finance time again. We're getting ready to put our budget before the council for a vote. We have a couple of meetings and some public hearings. Please check the website. It'll be posted on the front page of the website for any of those meetings and input, and the actual budget is actually placed online. We welcome any questions or inquiries about what we have there. We're proud of the team. We just received another consecutive year recognition of our team's financial responsibility, and we'll be posting that soon on our various newsletters. But thank you for all the folks who have put the work in from the department head's standpoint to this point, and for the team and the administration that'll help us walk it through the final phases to get before the public. With that, I yield.
Thank you so much, and again, it was such a pleasure to have all of the folks who came here for the education awards tonight, the parents, the teachers, the staff, the administrators, the folks from the county who were here. It was, it really is, it's a wonderful event, and Mayor Bacon deserves tremendous credit. He will not give himself this credit, so we're going to give it to him tonight in his absence, that he really deserves tremendous credit for bringing attention to everything that is happening with education in Smyrna in such a positive way. And we did have our vision report tonight. Kelsey Scott did a great job. It is very easy to become engaged in the city of Smyrna. It is a pleasure, I know I'm probably not the only council member who has, we get emails or calls, or we run into people on the street, and they want to know how they can get involved, and it is so easy to get involved in Smyrna through the vision program and having a community liaison. So I do encourage you to reach out if you want to find out ways in which you can become more involved in the community. It is easy to do that. Ask your council member, contact Kelsey. It is, it's an easy thing to do, and it is extremely rewarding. And that is it for committee reports. The show cause hearings, item 11, we have none. Citizen input, no one has signed up for this evening. So if there is no further business, I would like to adjourn the meeting. It is 8:20 p.m. Thank you.